Evening, it's after six o'clock. We're going to call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Crescent City. And, uh, iPad's moving kinda slow here. There it goes, May 7th, 2018. And would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Follman.
Here.
Mayor Protemkeim.
Here.
And Mayor Inscore.
I am here. Would you all please stand and Councilmember Follman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was pretty awesome. We are going to be returning to closed session after our open meeting. Council, do we have anything to report out or do we anticipate anything to report out a closed session tonight?
We have no action to report at this time. I don't anticipate having any action to report later.
All right, thank you. We're gonna open up with public comment and I will, before we open up public comment, I want to address the council for the possibility of adjusting our agenda tonight to move a couple of items up to the front after, after our ceremonial items. If we could, if the council would be in agreement for us to move item number 14 from the request from the Girl Scouts up to right after our ceremonial items and also item number 15, the draft budget for the Solid Waste Management Authority and take those two items at that, at that position if that's, if I have consensus with the council to do so.
So they'd be thrown under reports and presentations?
It'll be before reports and presentations.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, have consensus to do that? All right, thank you. All right, we will open up general public comment tonight. Any member of the public is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within our jurisdiction. Comments of public interest or matters that are on the agenda are accepted. Note however, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff or appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments should be directed towards the entire council and after receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and whether you live in the city or the county for the record and limit public comment to three minutes. You'll also be allowed an additional three minutes on each item on the agenda. Do we have any general public comment tonight? It appears, sir.
My name is Kent Paray. I'm a brand-new resident in Gasky, California, which makes me live in the county, which makes me come to this town for doctor's appointments and everything else. So that's why I decided to get involved with the city council meetings. If you don't like the things that you, where you live, then you have to get involved with politics to change them and make the change. So that's what I'm trying to do here. My name is Kent Paray and I am a resident of Gasky, California. I am a retired stagehand for 47 years in rock and roll. I met you, sir, when I called you over a RTC, RTC problem. And I flew off the handle and used some foul language, but I made my point and not to be cussing at you. So I have to apologize for that. I lost my political composure. I am a son of a Mary prankster. My father is Wavy Brady. I've been raised by him. He adopted me and stuck me in Woodstock on Trash Crew. I did 44 years with ZZ Top, 41 years with Steely Dan, 35 years with Grateful Dead. They are my family. All the Mary pranksters are my family. I've lived with I don't know how many celebrities and worked for them. I'm not here to cause any problems in Crescent City. I don't know what, I can't answer. But I got the cosmos connected to you because I've read what your visions are about your town that you're the mayor of. And I had that same vision to make it a better town for all of us to live in. So I felt the cosmic connection to call you direct. I don't know what happened and apparently I was supposed to be connected to you because I looked you up online and there was your cell number and I called your cell number. I don't usually just give, give it out on public records, okay? So it was supposed to be us connecting because I called your cell number, not called the office to get, and then I'm the individual that came in the other day to just talk to you to get an appointment. And I had 12 cops and a K-9 because I have an upset hippie asking the secretary if I was getting, being a victim of the Del Norte procrastination that's so professional around here. I've only been here for three years and I've gathered that already. So when I inquired about that, she pushed the panic button instead of saying, "Sir, you're getting a little out of hand, you're getting a little irate, I think you need to leave the office and come back tomorrow with more composure, have a nice day." Instead of pushing the panic button, she should've said that. My attorney told me I have, I've all sued for that happening, but I'm not wanting to go to court. Courts are ugly. I let karma kick people's ass. So I put it out there. But, you know, I'm just trying to be real. And Jerry Garcia told me, "Kill them with kindness, don't punch them in the face." Motorhead, Misfits, and everybody that's in the punk rock scene, anarchists, they told me, "Yeah, punch them in the face because we're getting tired of our peacefulness being played off for pushovers. We're tired of our kindness being played off for weakness." And that's why we formed Anarchy because we'll knock the heck out of whoever we need to if they disrespect us. So I'm trying to live the way Jerry Garcia taught me and not be an, a butt-head to keep them using foul language. I want to live in this county. I chose to buy my house here and not live in the Bay Area, not live in LA. I just met the police chief tonight before the meeting. He told me he's only been the police chief for three years. I know nothing about his record. I just met the man. I don't know nothing about him purely, period, about what he does politically. But he, he came up here to get relocated, to get out of LA. I don't blame him. Takes five hours to go do a 20-minute appointment with somebody to get there on the freeway. A messed up. So he wants a better life for his family, he brought it up here. I'm behind the man on that. But the thing is, is the right hand is the city, the left hand is the county. And both of you need to know what each other's doing because the left, right hand never knows what the left hand's doing and that's the problem. You don't, you wonder how community politics don't work? It's because none of them are laughing and coming together, they're punching each other because they're working against each other. So I'm trying to get everybody to have a one world. You keep talking about you want a rainbow world, then let's have one. Black lives matter? Of course, black lives matter, but every life matters, not just black lives. Quit making a racist, racist statement and put your signs in your yard that every life matters. Now, with that, I want to close. These ladies here are trying to get a mural passed made out of bottle caps. I know thousands and thousands and thousands of artists. And if these girls got talent to make a big mural on a wall out of bottle caps, more power to them.
Thank you, Mr. Paray. Appreciate that. All right, do we have any other general public comment tonight?
I don't live in the city, county. I'm just curious, I brought in some resolution or paper on Sunset Circle, they're putting in a bicycle path. I don't think it's on the agenda tonight, but did you guys receive?
I did.
Okay. And I was wondering, probably I need to get on the agenda for next meeting or if we can put it on the agenda to talk about.
Okay. I'm not sure where our timing is, Mr. Nelson, but, but we will certainly let you guys know before it's placed on the agenda.
Yeah, that's all in.
Yeah, absolutely. We will let all the property owners know so that they can be here to be part of that discussion.
Super.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yes, a second.
Linda Sutter District. Now, I just want to make sure because I had to leave the room to get a pen. Did you pull number 16 to discuss? Are you consenting the agenda?
No, we're still just in public comment. We haven't got to the consent.
Okay, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Have a good one.
Yep. We, we have any other public comment, general public comment? Okay, if not, we'll close public comment and we have some ceremonial items. First is proclamation for National Police Week. And so I'd like to read that and then present that to our, our fine officers. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week, on the average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty in the United States every 61 hours. Since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 20,000 US law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas in 1977, the state of California started holding a peace officer memorial ceremony at the state capitol to honor the officers who had fallen in the line of duty in the preceding year. Recognizing their sacrifice and the impact on their family and friends left behind, California has lost 1,603 officers in the line of duty. California has lost 33 K-9 officers killed in the line of duty-related deaths. Whereas in 2017, 135 officers and 29 K-9s died in the line of duty protecting our nation, our homes, our families, and our way of life, leaving behind their families and friends to carry on without them. In 2017, the state of California lost eight officers. Whereas the city of Crescent City extends its condolences to the families of those who have fallen in line of duty protecting us from evil. Now therefore, the city of Crescent City recognizes May 15th, 2018, as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 2nd as California Peace Officer Memorial Enrollment Ceremonies Day. And the city of Crescent City also recognizes the outstanding service of the Crescent City Police Department that they do for the city and wishes the officers a safe patrol each night and day when they go to protect our city. And I will fix my signature, Blake Inscore, Mayor. Chief? On behalf of the city council and the city, thank you. Please express our appreciation to all of our fine officers.
Thank you, sir.
Our second ceremonial proclamation is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Crescent City proclaiming March, I think it says March here, it's May 19th, 2018, as Kids to Parks Day. We'll make that correction. Whereas May 19th, 2018, is the eighth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more productive, active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melitus, hypertension, and hypogliescromia. And whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Crescent City does hereby proclaim to participate Kids to Parks Day, we urge the residents of Crescent City to make time, May 19th, 2018, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. And I will fix my signature, Blake Inscore, Mayor. Candace here? There you are.
I should've polished my shoes. I just want to say that people probably believe that because I work for the national parks and have done so for over 32 years, that I really believe in protecting natural resources such as our forests or maybe cultural resources, our history. And you know what? I think we are rich and down our economy with forests and minerals and history and all those neat things. But what I'm passionate about is our greatest resource in this community and that's children. I don't think we have any other greater resource in our county than our children.
There you go.
And everything we do to invest in them is the best investment we could ever make. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Candace. All right, I have another proclamation and it's to thank our local business owners and community members, including city and county staff, elected officials. I think just about half of the county is on this proclamation, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it all anyway. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Crescent City acknowledging the significant effort of staff, businesses, and individuals in welcoming the delegation from Rikuzentakata, Japan. Whereas on April 15th, 16th, 17th, and 18th of 2018, the county of Del Norte and the city of Crescent City welcomed dignitaries from Rikuzentakata, Japan for a formal celebration and signing ceremony to commemorate the sister-city relationship between the city of Crescent City and the county of Del Norte and the city of Rikuzentakata, Japan. And whereas the celebration, signing ceremony, and tours to businesses throughout our community required significant planning and effort by many. And whereas the county of Del Norte, city of Crescent City, and our local business owners and residents provided a memorable celebration that was recognized by Tomochiko Yuama, council general of Japan, as one of the most memorable and important events of his career. Whereas it is with great pride and sense of accomplishment that we celebrate the outpouring of support and genuine friendship put forth by our youth and community to our dignitaries from Rikuzentakata. And whereas behind-the-scenes efforts, conversations, and donations of many to help build this relationship over the last five years should not go unrecognized. And whereas the following community members, agencies, and businesses came together to ensure our community welcomed our sister-city with open arms, these efforts should be recognized. And I'm just going to read and I will apologize if I missed somebody. And I'm sure that there is somebody out there that I may have missed. I apologize. We tried to make sure that we identified everyone that's been a part of making this possible. City staff, Eric Weir, Eric Taylor, Fritz Ludeman, Ivan Minstall, Jason Wiley, Kevin Tuttman, Robin Patch, Sunny Valero. City public works staff, Dan Borges, Daniel Glenn, Gilberto Rodriguez, Josh Delatorre, Richard Wyatt, and Tim Pierce. Our city council members, you know them. County supervisors, you know them as well. County staff, Jase Arena, Bill Stevens, Christina Osagueda, sorry, Dan McCorkle, Dobbin Kelly Harrison, Kelsey Bozeman, Kylie Herford, Tony Self, Valerie Machado. Business owners, community members, The 101 Smokehouse, Six Degrees of Celebration, Albert Seafood, Alexander Dairy, Building Healthy Communities, Calor Life Flight, California Redwood Art Association, Chris and Lisa Howard, Colleen Parker, Christina's Mexican Restaurant, Dan Brittan, Debbie Olson, Elk Valley Rancheria, Frank and Paula Magarino, Jeff Harris, Kimmy Scott, Mackenzie Webb, Darcy and Darren Bradbury, Mary Dorman, Marcy and Darren.
Marcy and Darren Bradbury.
What did I say?
Darcy.
Well, I meant Marcy. There's a lot of names on here. North Coast Ocean Sports and Grill, Ocean World, Oceanfront Lodge, Perlita's Mexican Restaurant, Portopine, Sandy and Son, Randy and Sonia Fugate, Redwood Coast Transit, Requiem, Rumiano Cheese, Safeway, Saki One, Samantha Fuller, Seaquake Brewing, Sutter Coast Hospital, The Chart Room Restaurant, Trees of Mystery. Gosh, if I missed somebody, I'm sure sorry, but I am so thankful for everybody who made this possible. They'll therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Crescent City, the council's appreciation and thanks to all who were involved in the preparation and execution of a sister-city agreement with our sister-city, Rikuzentakata, Japan, this 7th day of May, 2018, Blake Inscore, Mayor. All right. Good job, everyone. All right, yes, you can applaud for everybody who did something. One last. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Crescent City in appreciation for the California Redwood Arts Association. Whereas the California Redwoods Art Association is a community of artists and whereas the artists nurture creativity, provide leading-edge ideas to inspire communities. And whereas on April 7th, 2013, a little over two years after the massive tsunami hit Japan, a boat from Takata High School washed ashore here in Crescent City. And whereas this created the beginning of a relationship between Rikuzentakata, Japan and Crescent City, California. And whereas on April 16th, 2018, the city of Crescent City, the county of Del Norte, and the delegation from Rikuzentakata, Iwate Prefecture, Japan, signed a sister-city agreement. And whereas in preparation for this monumentous and historic occasion, the California Redwood Art Association created beautiful, memorable, and striking framed art pieces that outlined the devastation of the 2011 tsunami event. And whereas the photos demonstrated the incredible similarities between the two communities. And whereas using the time and talents of the members of the association to create valuable memories prove to be something that will stand the test of time. And now there, or let it be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Crescent City does hereby state its sincere appreciation to the work done by the California Redwood Art Association for the display created for the sister-city event on April 16th, 2018, and urge all residents to nurture forms of artistic creativity. Sign, Blake Inscore, Mayor. All right. Thank you.
Jim?
I'm really happy to see all the young ladies here today and with the artwork that you're going to perform, we would be more than happy to help you. If you need any help, please let us know if there's anything that we can do to make your endeavors succeed. And I'm sorry that I'm here and not 162 members that we have that should all be here because they were all instrumental in making this happen. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Thanks, thanks, yeah. Okay, we made an adjustment to our agenda and before we move on with the rest of the agenda, we are going to take up item number 14. That is the request from the Girl Scouts of Northern California Troop 90648 for a bottle-cap mural on the wastewater treatment facility fence. Mr. Taylor?
You're on for a treat tonight. You just mentioned, Girl Scout Troop, Junior Troop 90648 has made a request to the city council to affix a bottle-cap mural to the face of the wastewater treatment plant fence, kind of in the southeast corner of the fence. You do have some attachments kind of depicting that location. And also to direct the city manager to sign a maintenance agreement for said mural. So the first step in the process for getting the mural open for public displays is to go through architectural review for the Architectural Review Committee at the Planning Commission, which Girl Scout Troop did on April 12th. One of our general plan policies states that all murals must have one of three themes, Redwood, Redwood Parks, Seacoast Village, or Crescent City Historic Past. Architectural Review Committee did find that it was in compliance with that policy in that it does have a depiction of our Seacoast Village. So the mural was approved at that meeting. Also, they found that the mural does not have any commercial depictions in it. It is a bottle-cap mural of a seacoast display, kind of like an ocean and sunset. I don't want to get too much into the project because I have a whole group of presenters that are great public speakers that are going to put me to shame, so I'll probably just turn it over to them right now, Star Blackburn.
Good idea.
Junior Troop 90648. Thank you.
Pull it down towards you. Just pull it way down there. Keep going. There you go, perfect.
Hello, my name is Kia Wiki and this is my Girl Scout troop. We are juniors in Girl Scouts and in third and fourth grade. We're here today because we'd like to make a mural out of bottle caps and put it somewhere on beachfront park. Last year, our Girl Scout journey was all about the wonders of water. We learned about how important water is to the world. We also learned that if we don't do something, there won't be enough water in the world for all the people. The main thing, the main thing we learned this year is that there's no new water. All the water on earth just cycles around and around. We can't make new water.
That's really important because we all have to share water. There are more and more and more people in the world, but there's no new water.
It was sad when we learned about people drinking dirty water.
We really wanted to buy a well for some of them, but we don't have enough money.
We learned that people in other parts of the world walk three and a half miles every day for clean water. We were also sad because most of the people who walk and carry the water are women and girls, so they don't go to school and get a good education. We also try carrying water, too.
We also learned about water pollution. The currents in the ocean called gyres push all the trash in the water into a big floating dump. It's so big, it's like driving across Texas. It's so big, it's like driving across Texas.
We had a tour of the wastewater treatment plant and learned about the microorganisms that clean the water and make it fresh again to use here in Crescent City. We also thought, what small things could we do to help with the world's water problem?
One thing we learned is how long it takes things in the water to decompose. We thought we could keep some of the bad stuff out by collecting plastic caps, which will still be around in 1,000 years.
Then we decided on our Take Action project, to make a mural out of plastic bottle caps. Our original goal was to fill a four-by-eight sheet of plywood.
We saved and saved all summer long, and in the fall, we started counting. One Girl Scout cookie box case held 625 caps, and we had 21 cases. That's 13,000 caps!
Then we found out how many caps it takes to cover one square foot. It's about 72 caps. That means we have enough bottle caps to cover 187 square feet.
Here we go.
So we know we can make this mural. It'll keep these caps out of the water and make something beautiful for our park. We have some help from Building Trades Class at Castle Rock Charter School and Artisan
Since we want our mural to last, we'll take care of it. We'll monitor for damages and replace any missing or damaged caps in a timely manner. We will also scrub the mural clean once a year to remove any excess dirt.
It's hard to stand up and speak in front of people. By coming here tonight, we are definitely working on our leadership skills, but this is just the beginning of our work. We have one more thing to say.
Thank you for listening to our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Council? Oh, go ahead. You're just going to burst.
I am. I'm so proud of all of you. I've known a lot of you for, you know, quite some time. Anyway, hey, good job. What do you feel you've learned most about collecting these bottle caps, the process of asking for permission? What do you feel like is the most important thing that you've learned?
Come on up here, Holly.
When we help our community and help the world's water pollution and dirty water, it's like learning lifelong skills that we will use as adults.
Good deal. Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Short?
I just can't say how proud I am of you guys for showing up here and putting on a presentation like that. It was outstanding. Thank you.
Mr. Follin?
Yeah, again, just overwhelmed. This is very incredible. Thank you, guys, for coming and doing this. Thank you for the troop leaders for, you know, pushing them along. I want to know what you girls think we should do with all that trash in the ocean, though. Go ahead.
Come up here. You may have ideas.
No kidding. Yeah.
One thing we can do to help with all the trash in the ocean is put out more trash cans for, like, there's recyclables and non-recyclables. I think that there should be more non-recyclable trash cans in front of houses and apartments so that they don't have... Little, little, little. So that people have a place to throw away trash that doesn't go in the ocean.
Thank you.
Did you hear that?
Great job.
Taking notes over there? Mr. Ward? You should talk to somebody that's on solid waste. Do you know anybody? All right. Well, I just have to say, ladies, it has been a privilege to have you present. We have lots and lots of presentations that come before us, and oftentimes, we just kind of make our way through it. And then other times, like tonight, we really understand how much work goes into the things that people are doing. And I think that you guys did an absolutely fantastic job. And I think I'm willing to say with pretty good confidence that this is the best presentation that I have ever seen since I've been Mayor of Crescent City. So you guys did a pretty awesome job.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty awesome. You deserve that. All right. Mr. Taylor, where are you hiding? Oh, there you are. Do you have anything else that you need to speak to us about regarding our, what's in front of us tonight as far as making decisions?
He's going to have a hard time following that presentation.
Yeah.
I don't even want to give my next presentation.
You're welcome.
No, I think in front of you, it's one, approval of the location, and two, approval of the maintenance agreement. Like I said, the Architectural Review Committee approved the content of the mural, so other than that, I think that's about it.
Okay.
Mayor Inscore, if I may, when you do take the consideration of approval of the maintenance agreement, just make sure that you authorize City Manager to, or the interim City Manager to sign it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comment regarding the proposal and presentation given to us by our Girl Scouts tonight? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, then we'll close public comment, or I'll bring it back to the Council for action.
Trying to get the order right.
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the Girl Scouts of Northern California Troop 90648 to affix a seven-by-seven bottle cap mural, as opposed by the Architectural Review Committee, to the wastewater treatment facility and plant fence.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Enthusiastically, yes.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Gladly. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follin?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore?
Absolutely, yes. All right, we need one more action here, and then we'll let you guys get out of here, unless you just want to stay for the rest of the exciting things tonight.
I'm sure they appreciate you moving them up.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
In the order of things. And, sir, I'd like to approve the mural maintenance agreements and also the ability for the City Manager or interim City Manager to sign.
All right, I have a motion to approve the maintenance agreement and allow the City Manager or interim City Manager to sign. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follin?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, ladies. We look forward to seeing that mural. Good job. All right. Wow. We cleared the house. We're clearing the house. All right, while the Girl Scouts and their families make their way on out, Mr. Ward, if you'd like to follow that up, we are going to take item number 15. That is the draft budget for the Solid Waste Management Authority. The draft budget is required as a part of the JPA to come before both the City and the County, and so this is our opportunity to hear from Mr. Ward regarding the draft budget. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Inscore, and members of the City Council. This is the time that I'm essentially required to appear before you, and I'll just open the door to any City Council member or any member of the community who has a question about solid waste or recycling and how we're administering those programs. Please, the door is always open, and I know that you hear from a variety of constituents, but to the extent that you are interested in solid waste and recycling issues, I very much encourage you to at least find out from us what's happening. Today, we're looking at our annual budget, and I know that it's pretty hard for the other members of the City Council who don't regularly attend the authority meetings to understand what it is you're looking at. But essentially, this is largely a status quo budget, except that our rates are adjusted annually based on the changes to the Consumer Price Index. And we are trying to set aside some funds for the development of a transfer station to serve the northern portion of the county, because we do not have a site identified or any of those costs. It's a kind of a ballpark-y estimate, but it's important that we set aside those resources so that we can engage in that activity. The other thing you may notice from this budget is there are grayed and black boxes. The gray boxes essentially are placeholders for continuing grant programs where they're multi-year programs, so we don't know exactly what the balance is that we'll roll over, but that grant program will continue next fiscal year. The blacked-out boxes are simply grants for, say, fiscal year 18, 19, and in the column indicating the year fiscal year 17, 18. It's a blank because, of course, that grant didn't exist at that time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and about anything to do with solid waste and recycling. And also, I'd like to add a side comment of my appreciation and gratitude to the Girl Scouts in highlighting the problem of plastics in the ocean and the seven gyres, which are a significant issue globally, but especially to us who live in a fishing community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anybody from Council have any questions regarding the budget?
I guess my one question and concern regarding recycling, as a commercial user, I have to pay for recycling.
You're correct, you do. That's the current rate structure.
Right. So why would I want to do that if, you know, everybody else?
Well, there is actually, there's a variety of reasons you might want to do that. First, it's less expensive. To the extent that you have the same volume of trash and the same volume of recycling, the recycling will always be less expensive. So you have to pay for the trash, you have to pay less for the recycling, but it's still a collection service. The other thing that might motivate some is that there is a mandatory commercial recycling requirement in the state, so if you generate more than four cubic yards of trash a week, that you're, you really are required to have some kind of recycling as part of your business operations, even if it's just a separated area for your bottles and cans. So those are two reasons. The other reasons might include resource conservation and your image in the community.
Any other questions, budget-specific questions? I think it's worthwhile to note that for three years, we have, we've seen steady increases in our revenues and have kept our expenses below revenues each of those years, while at the same time, this previous year, setting aside a large payment for OPEB liabilities, something that we are certainly familiar with here at the City of trying to deal with. And so I am appreciative of the fiscal management that we've tried to establish within the Solid Waste Management Authority, and applaud your efforts, Mr. Ward, in that regard, so...
And back at you. You've been great as a chair for the last few years, and the City Council and the entire county are well-served by your leadership.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And just for the council's information, if you take no action at all, that's in some ways kind of the most appropriate action, because you can't be expected to micromanage a budget that you're just seeing once a year. And second of all, if you just don't make a comment on the budget, that's considered tacit approval, and the board can then take action when it reappears before the authority board.
Yeah. And so if anything, if we come back to something and want to make it a discussion item, we can, as long as we present that back before it comes to the authority board for approval, that can be addressed by the Solid Waste Management Authority itself.
That's correct. If there's any specific recommendations, we want to have that conversation with the authority board.
All right. Pretty good. Anything? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Yep. Public comment? Yeah.
Linda Sutter, Fifth District. What I'd like to know is, since you have to pay for recycling, do you make money from the recycling? And if you do make money from the recycling, what do you do with that money?
Be happy to answer that question if the chair's interested. So recycling in general, while there is some cash back for the scrap value of materials, that scrap value generally does not cover the collection costs at all. And in fact, the markets globally have taken a nosedive in a very big way. Just in the last few months, the revenues associated with recycling have dropped by close to 50%. And you can imagine running, trying to run any business where you're making half as much money one month after another, it's really hard to continue. So while I appreciate that people know that there is cash in recycling, that generally does not cover the costs of collection, so that's kind of the short answer of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Yes?
Again, my name is Kent Ferray, and I want to talk about the recycling issue. As you brought it up, I had brought to my attention that some months ago, that China quit taking the America recycling because Americans aren't cleaning them completely, and they're too trashed out, and they're tired of it, so they're just cut us all off from our recycling. Now, if that happened, what's going to happen to all of our recycling if China doesn't take it back from us? Is it going to end up in the ocean where I saw garbage getting thrown off pantels, being in the Navy for three years? So, you know, I just like to find out what's going on with the recycling, where it's actually ended up. Has it ended up in, taking away on a barge and just dumped out in the ocean? Is it actually getting to China and dealt with? That's my question.
Thank you. And I would encourage you, Mr. Ferray, to join us with our, at our Solid Waste Management Authority meetings. You can touch base with Mr. Ward. He can tell you when our regular meetings are. Our next meeting is actually a week from today at 4:30. We've been addressing these very issues. China has put a very stringent requirement. They are expecting all incoming recycling to be at a 0.5% contamination, which is, which is, it's almost impossible to, that's like saying zero, 0.5. So, anyway, but we're talking tonight basically just about the budget, but we'll talk more about that next Monday. You're certainly welcome to join us.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Ward? Any other public comment? We'll close public comment then. Thank you, Mr. Ward, for being here. All right, we are going to return to our regular agenda, and we are going to move to item number five, a report and presentation, hazard mitigation presentation from Mr. Taylor.
Brief presentation, just announcing that the public comment period has opened for our Hazard Mitigation Plan update. So basics of the presentation is we cover kind of the planning process, why we plan, why we have the mitigation plan, and then I'll come back to the next council meeting, present our annex for approval and discussion for the council. I'm actually going to sit over here to give this presentation, so it goes a little quicker so they can actually see what I'm doing. So we're actually in the process of updating our Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a five-year plan, meaning that it is required to be updated and reviewed every five years per law. So what is mitigation? Again, prevention, protection, response, recovery, and mitigation. It's kind of the five phases of emergency management. It's kind of the five phases of emergency management. And obviously, the whole idea for emergency management and planning is for two reasons. One, to, for mitigation prior to and after a disaster happens. So this is why this is driven by the Disaster Mitigation Act, or the Stafford Act is more commonly known. So legislation requires local jurisdictions and states as well. The state has to have a plan as well, or we are unable to have a plan to actually adopt the hazard mitigation plans. And you see down the bottom there, it says, "No plan, no money." They mean it. So if we don't have a plan or an updated plan in place, we're not eligible to apply for a lot of hazard mitigation grants. And also, it could put us in a kind of a bad position if a disaster does happen, and we need to have some recovery assistance and other federal monies. Again, the Disaster Mitigation Act 2000 really sets for sound management of natural resources, things in a social context, an economic context, and sustainable hazard mitigation. Hence the plan. Again, why plan? Establish maintain eligibility for grant funds is kind of a big deal. As you all recall, because we had the plan in place about three years ago or so now, we were able to apply for a grant which funded the retrofacing retrofit of our fire hall. So that was directly tied to this plan. And mitigation grant funding. Preparedness, again proactive versus reactive. Obviously proactive approach. What are things we can put in place now to mitigate or lessen or avoid the impacts of a natural disaster? And of course, reactive, what are we going to do post-disaster? What types of plans we're going to have in place, such as a debris removal plan or an economic recovery plan? Again, this is a key element in emergency management, planning process. The plan sets in place the course for response and recovery to impacts from natural disasters and requires commitment and support from both elected officials and their constituents. Hence why we're here tonight, to let everybody know this public comment period is open now. Really encourage everybody to look at this plan and submit their comments. We'll tell everybody how to do that at the end of the presentation here. What is required Disaster Mitigation Plan? Again, federal code of regulations. A proper plan must engage the public through all phases of the plan's development, which we have done through a website and public outreach. Review incorporate plans and programs that can support and enhance hazard mitigation. Again, we look at, as we go through this planning process, we look internally at all of our plans and programs we have in place, as well as look at the entire county and with other jurisdictions our planning partners are doing and areas that we can coordinate together. Again, a big part of this plan is assess risk to natural hazards that impact a planning area. So for the city, kind of our top three were tsunami, storm damage, and earthquake. Whereas you could look at somewhere like Gasky, that maybe fire, flood, and earthquake might be their top priorities. So although these natural disasters can impact everybody in the county, certain planning areas within the county will have different priorities for obvious reasons. Identify a plan maintenance strategy. Again, to keep updating the plan through the five years, it's also required that every year that we look at, get together as an organization and review the plan. And identify and prioritize actions. And the next council meeting, I will bring our annex back, and we will discuss our prioritized actions. Again, it's a multi-jurisdictional plan. This is a preferred format by FEMA and most government agencies that fund these types of programs. Identifies, creates partnerships, and enhances grant funding opportunities. So again, a lot of multi-jurisdictional projects tend to do better for grants than single jurisdictional plans. And for multi-jurisdictional plans, all partners must participate in the process, rank risks, as I just discussed, perform a capability assessment, again, looking internally where your capabilities are, and identify and prioritize jurisdiction-specific actions. Delano County's Objective Search Project, of course, to promote the wise use of resources and increase coordination among Delano County jurisdictions and multi-jurisdictional plans. Again, is to look at this countywide, how we can all cooperate as a county and how we can all react, who we can plan and react in the event of a disaster. The planning process, so I'll go with that briefly. This go around, the county personnel had applied for FEMA planning grant, where they cover 75%. The 25% is an in-kind match. So all of our, each jurisdiction staff time counts as that match. County procured a facilitator for the process. We are using Tetra Tech again. They helped us complete our first initial plan. And for the past nine months, we have sent a partnership of 10 local governments, obviously including the county and the city. Established a steering committee, would be representatives of all the different planning partners. Of course, assess risk to nine hazards of concern. Engage the public. Confirm goals, objectives, and actions of the plan. Identify the plan maintenance strategy, again, the five-year update and yearly review. And identify and prioritize mitigation actions for every planning partner. Again, the partnership, 10 local governments. Of course, you have the county, the city, Harbor District, for example, Big Rock, Gasky, Klamath, Smith River. And this go around, we actually had one tribal government join, which is Elk Valley Rancheria. So it was nice to see them come onboard as well. And of course, the planning area covers the entire county, but then, of course, you have jurisdictional boundaries within the county. Again, so the draft plan is out. It'll be posted, I believe, starting on Wednesday. This presentation will also be given at the board supervisor's meeting, I believe, tomorrow. There's two volumes. There's volume one and volume two. Volume one applies to all planning partners, kind of sets the overall goals and objectives of the plan. And volume two is jurisdictional-specific, meaning that each of the planning partners has their own plan within that volume. Again, the plan is comprehensive, over 310 pages. And they say plenty of maps. For example, there's planning maps, there's hazard maps, there's geologic maps showing the different types of soils within the county, identifying different hazard areas, fire maps, for example, as well. You have guiding principles, six goals and 10 objectives. And the plan has, again, a five-year performance period. So for more information or please make comments, visit the county's website. There it is up there for reference. And there are some facts on the website as well. Steering Committee meeting agendas and minutes are also on there. The draft plan, of course, would encourage everybody, and I encourage the council, if you have time, start reviewing the plan if you can. But I will bring it for presentation to the council as well. I'll bring the draft plan, and then, of course, we will be required to then adopt the plan. And it's also has been adopted as part of our general plan, so again, we're updating that as well. And there's other mitigation information on the website as well. So the final public comment period ends at 5 o'clock Pacific Standard Time, Tuesday, May 22nd. This is the primary means to submit public comment via the website. Subsequently, this plan will need to be submitted to CalOES for their approval. And then, again, it will go to FEMA for additional approval. And then, of course, after that, it will come back for formal adoption. Are there any questions? Okay.
Two.
Correct. You can get on the website and submit them directly.
Okay. And did you recount the website?
Correct. You can just go on the county's website, and you'll see on the front there it'll have a mitigation plan. It's pretty clear.
Okay. Any public comment regarding the hazardous mitigation plan? Is it generic? 310 pages. I'm not sure how generic that would be. Well? Okay. All right. Close public comment. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right. We're going to move on with our agenda. We come to the consent calendar. We have, we have regular council meeting minutes for April 2nd, the April 9th closed session meeting minutes, April 9th joint city fire meeting minutes, and the April 16th special meeting minutes. We have warrant claims list for March 24th through April 6, 2018, and April 7th through April 27th, 2018. Payroll report, March 31st through April 6, 2018, and April 14th through April 20th, 2018. Budget adjustment for the sewer fund and the attached Resolution 2018-18. We're going to pull item number 10 for a correction on the resolution. And then, item number 11, U.S. Bicycle Route 95 through Crescent City. Council have anything regarding the items on the consent calendar minus number 10?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nelson was here earlier and submitted a paper. Is item number 11 what he was referring to? I have not had a chance to review his email, so I just wanted to make sure that we...
His comment was regarding the Sunset Circle project, that the connection of the coastal trail along Sunset Circle. I'll make sure that you have a copy of that, extra sure. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I move to approve minus number 10.
Second?
I have a motion to second. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar items 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11? Seeing to a public comment, we'll close public comment. Would you pull the vote on those items?
Yes. And who was the second? Was it?
I was the second.
Thank you. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore?
Yes. Item number 10, council should have, you have in front of you, and you should have received an email, just a correction on the resolution of the number that it should say and does on the one in front of you, that the expenditure increased or decreased, in this case, was 4,880, and the revenue increase, or in this case, decrease, is 4,051. That is now in alignment with what you had in your staff report. It was just a number that was applied incorrectly. And that has been corrected. I don't have any other discussion regarding that unless somebody else does.
You move to approve number 10.
I have a motion to approve number 10. Do I have a second?
A second.
Do I have any public comment on item number 10 only? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Keim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore?
Yes. Very good. We do not have any public hearings, but we do have some continuing business. Item number 12 is reintroduce sidewalk ordinance number 801. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mayor Inscore, members of the council. So I'll be starting this discussion, and then Mr. Taylor is also here to represent the Community Development Department. So there was a slight mistake on the staff report that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. In the staff report, it states that on December 18th, there was a motion by Councilmember Short, seconded by Councilmember Follman, and carried on a 5-0 vote to basically send this ordinance back to staff to remove the language in the ordinance that refers to anything other than new construction or moving of a building. What that motion was, that was a motion to revise the minutes taken at a later meeting. The actual motion in regard to this agenda item was on a motion by Councilmember Short, seconded by Councilmember Greenow, and carried on a 4-1 vote. It was to send that ordinance back to staff, to revise the ordinance, to remove the language in the ordinance that refers to anything other than new construction or moving of a building. So I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear, that it was 4 to 1 with Mayor Inscore casting the no vote to send it back to staff. So, to refresh everyone's memory, because it's been a few months since we last discussed this. Currently, the city ordinance requires that any new construction or altered construction, basically any improvements to one's property that exceeds 25% of the current assessed value at the, according to the Delano County Assessor, the assessed value on their tax rolls, would be required to upgrade their sidewalks in front of their property. The ordinance that staff drafted back in December and took before the council, modified that ordinance, and basically, basically had language such that you had to... It only applied to properties that were actually increasing their habitable area. So it wouldn't apply to, say, major remodels or people just trying to, say, replace roofs or to maintain their building. Because that was some of the situations that we were running into with staff. Is you had people coming to us pulling building permits, which technically qualified as a modification or an alteration to their structure. And it would, it would trigger this requirement for them to have to replace the sidewalks in front of their property. So that was the intent of the ordinance that came back before the council. Council then directed staff on that 4-1 vote to revise the ordinance so that it basically would only be new construction. So it took out the stipulation that it was, had to add actually additional, additional habitable floor area. But now, it was only just new construction, basically on vacant land. So that's the ordinance that's, that it's in front of you tonight, as staff was directed to bring that back. Now, that's not the complete discussion. That's the discussion on the ordinance that's in front of you. We have our next item, which we'll, which we'll talk about in detail, which is addressing dilapidated sidewalks, trip hazards, different things like that. So this is just for development. And so that's, that's where staff has been directed to council for further discussion.
Okay. Council have any questions, comments regarding what staff has brought back that's identified as ordinance 801?
I just had one small piece on, on the ordinance itself. On the first paragraph, the first whereas, it says, second sentence, right at the end, sidewalk improvements when making structural modifications or additions that equal or exceed 25% of market value. Now, I know that the last ordinance is also in the packet, so I didn't want to get confused. But it appears that the language to the actual municipal code down lower in that page, 12.04.030, is correct for what we were asking back in December. But that first paragraph at the top of the page doesn't seem to match.
It's, the first paragraph is reciting what the current law is.
It's assessed value, not market value.
Oh, that's, okay. That's a good point. That's a typo.
So let's say, you know, somebody's owned their home for 25 years. Their assessed value is going to be much different than, you know, somebody that's just bought a home three years ago. So you could more likely trigger that 25%. Just by putting a new roof on.
But that, that initial whereas was, that's a recitation of what the current law is in the code?
Okay. Thank you for that.
But still, it should have said assessed value, not market.
Yeah.
Oh, it says both. Assess market.
Assess market. Wait a minute. So as I said, the language that appears to be a new quote for the new ordinance seems correct to me, and that is only when there's new construction or we're moving a building. And that's, that's where I would, that's where I wanted it to be. So I just had that question about the whereas's.
Do I have anything?
New construction only means new habitable floor space. If I was building a shed on my property, that wouldn't count. I wouldn't have to install a sidewalk or do this stuff.
The, actually, the revised ordinance, you can still build additional habitable spaces as well. So you could build a whole second unit on your property.
Okay.
And it would not trigger this.
Oh, wow.
That was, that's kind of the major difference in between what was proposed previously and what is proposed currently. So it would have to be an absolute, just new construction on your property. So a vacant piece of property.
Yeah.
So I see what Mr. Follman's saying. It says, "Any dwelling or building." So does that mean if I put up a garden shed?
It requires a building permit. But that's on vacant parcel. It's not on your parcel that you already have your home on.
If you can go back to the trigger, it can't exceed 25% of the project value. I mean, the value of a shed really is... I mean, the value of a shed really isn't going to trigger that.
It'd have to be pretty elaborate, a garden shed, but I guess it was just a kind of a-
Yeah, so I don't really, so to address your question, it really, no, we're not going to go and force somebody to make sidewalk improvements if they're going to put in a $1,000 shed on their property.
I guess, I doubt you could probably build a garage for 25% though.
But the 25% of the, is no longer here. The only 25% that is in this new ordinance is 20, if, it can't exceed 25% of the cost of the work. The 25% component based on the assessed value has been removed.
Well, you're exactly right.
Correct.
So it doesn't apply any longer. It does, in the current code, it does, it's, in the proposed ordinance, it is, it's not there. And, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And that's the point, right? So if we're not going to require 25% of $1,000 for sidewalk improvements.
You're exactly right. I had in my head that 25% was still there, and it is, but in a different context, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, and I think just kind of in historical context, and we'll get to it in the next presentation, but a lot of jurisdictions had different ways of dealing with sidewalk and repair improvements. It's an older ordinance. Some jurisdictions kind of approached it on this cost-based performance. Obviously, what you've seen over the past couple of years, we've had some issues with this ordinance that maybe went a little bit unfair to certain projects. So we're trying to fix that. I mean, that's the intent of the ordinance. And then, of course, this is a trigger for new construction. So this is really our trigger for, if you're going to have new development and the sidewalks don't exist, we're requiring you to put in sidewalks and make the public improvements. The next discussion will really pertains to repair, ongoing repair and maintenance. And I think it's an important discussion that we certainly need to have. And that is a component that's really been missing out of our municipal code.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I'm going to once again voice my opposition to the ordinance as it is. I think that what Mr. Young had presented to us previously was a more equitable approach on behalf of the city. I think that with the movement towards ADUs or accessory dwelling units and the possibility of people starting to add housing space that they're going to turn around and rent out on their same property, and that now that's not new construction under this ordinance. A person could, I've known people in this community who rebuilt their house, but they have tripled the square footage of what their house that they built onto was. That's not new construction, even though the value of that property more than tripled of what probably was assessed at initially. Wouldn't apply. I think that there has to be some level of responsibility that when major improvement is made that significantly changes the dynamic of a property, that sometimes that needs to be seen in some occasions like you would value new construction. The, to simply say that if it's, unless it's a new, brand-new house, everybody gets a pass, doesn't seem to be a responsible way of using the system. I agree that the way the system is written right now in the code, that if it's over, anything over 25%, that's too much. That's too far of no reach. I don't think it's unrealistic to expect that there are certain expectations. I live in a house of 1,100 square feet here in the city. I've looked at the possibility of adding a bathroom and a bedroom to that house and adding 600 square feet. That's a significant increase in the square footage of that home, and it's going to significantly change the value of that home. I don't think it's irresponsible for us to say that there should be some number that says this triggers a responsibility to upgrade or install sidewalks and curbs in the city. I know I've been outvoted by that, but I just don't, that's just my opinion. I don't think that leaving it where, unless you build a brand-new house, you don't have to do anything. But, so, I express my disagreement when we looked at this in December, and I still disagree. So, but that's okay. That's why we have five or four tonight of people up here to discuss these items. And I certainly would like some feedback from my fellow councilmembers on why there shouldn't be some expectations for major improvements. I would, I would, I would agree that anything that would be maintenance-related, and I would include things like new windows in a house, new siding, a new roof, things that would cosmetically increase that value, but would also be a maintenance-type thing, those would be removed. I'm talking about significant construction adding on to the house. Maybe it's a percentage of a square feet of habitable space, as Mr. Young had suggested. Or especially with this whole idea of these ADUs. We don't have something right now to address that. And I think that with property being as expensive it is, it won't be long before people start building 10 by 15 sheds in their backyard and calling them an apartment. And so I'm concerned about some of these, about some of these things, that people are going to do that, and in that case, could in fact do that and charge rent. And we still don't have any control over that from the expectation of them improving the property as a whole. So those are just my concerns about this, and I still have them. So, anyway.
I certainly share a lot of those concerns. I mean, yeah, these, you know, curbs and gutters and sidewalks. Property owners shouldn't just get a free pass and get to ignore their sidewalks and curbs and gutters. I think the free pass goes away with Section C of this ordinance, though. Prior to the issuance of any building permit, the public works department shall determine whether curbs, gutters, and sidewalks are required. That's the check on the property owners, is our public works department. So I'm trusting that they can do that, that they'll be able to make that judgment.
Unfortunately, there is no criteria. If it's not a new construction or a home being moved on to that property, like a modular, which we can do, if it's not vacant land and somebody building or moving a property on, then that is the only criteria currently in 801 that would allow for a homeowner to have to, or developer to have to, improve or install sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
So let's take your house, for example. You're going to add 600 square feet, but you're kind of on a curve right there. So you don't have just the typical amount of sidewalk in front of your house. You have exponentially way more sidewalk. So are you saying that you would want that homeowner or that corner lot, that lot that has twice as much sidewalk to have to do all that? Where would be your lot?
Well, in my case, my parcel doesn't extend all the way to the corner. There are three separate residential parcels on each street. So, I understand your question. If we were talking about a commercial property, such as the church, which is on a contiguous parcel, then yes, it would apply under the current ordinance. And I guess I would, and we're talking here about everything. And right now, if we change this as it is, I can build a pretty good-sized building and not have to upgrade anything.
That's correct.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that, I can add on, I'm sorry, not build. I can add on, and, which I think is what, obviously, from a commercial standpoint, if I was adding on to our commercial property, I wouldn't build a freestanding. I'd attach it.
Mayor, to clarify, just a couple of things. The previous ordinance, which I think you were speaking to, the one that came before the council in December, it did allow for consideration to those large lots. So, you know, not only do corner lots have a lot more of a frontage that you would have to make improvements on, but also there are certain parcels in the city that maybe encompass a half a block or even a full block, in which they would have to put sidewalks all the way around the entire block. So the previous ordinance, to try to address that, did have a stipulation that the work of the improvement, that the sidewalk work would be limited to 25% of whatever that work was. So if you were building, say, a $50,000 improvement, then you would only be limited to 25% of that $50,000, or $12,500 in sidewalk improvements.
How much does $12,000 buy you in sidewalks?
$12,000 doesn't buy you very much in sidewalks, but neither does 50 in improvements either.
Now, in your, in your ADU scenario, I don't really read the new code that way. It says, any construction, or a construction of any dwelling. So if you put a new dwelling in your backyard, you're going to have to comply with this part of the municipal code.
Okay.
That's just the way I'm reading it.
If we can interpret it that way, I think-
I don't see anywhere where it says anything about a vacant lot. So, that's, that's the way I read it.
And again, the interpretation, I feel, will be left up to the public works staff. I don't see why they wouldn't interpret it that way.
Well, part of the reason I'm thinking that it wouldn't necessarily be interpreted that way is because in our previous discussion, that's really the way it was, that's the way it was discussed.
That was the spirit of the law.
Basically being vacant land, not, not, so, I mean, that was what our previous discussion would be. And whenever possible, I think it's important for us to be able to have clarity with our ordinances as opposed to interpret, allowing for interpretation, putting that back on staff. So I see what you're saying, and I think-
Your ADU scenario is a very real concern. I totally agree with that.
So let's say somebody bought a teardown. There's a, there's a real dilapidated house, and they tear it down, and they build an entirely new structure on that. That, to me, is new construction.
It would be.
Yeah.
I agree.
Plus, they leave one wall. I know, I know you guys think I'm just being facetious about this, but people do this.
You can't inhabit one wall.
But, but people make these decisions to try to skirt ordinances and codes and having to have enforcement, and I think we need to think about those types of things, because people do leave a foundation partial of a wall, and then they're saying, it's a remodel. It's not new construction. And I just don't want to leave any ambiguity if we don't have to. I think that we need clarity, and if you guys disagree about how all of that goes, I just hope that we can come to some clarity so that staff is not having to interpret these things, but to apply them consistently to every person who comes in for a building permit. That's my big concern.
I could not agree more, and I actually was just having a discussion with our city attorney here. The direction that Stafford did receive last time from the council was for new construction, at least my understanding, it was new construction on unimproved lots. That was the intent of this ordinance, and so, but it doesn't have that language in there currently. So if that is the intent of the council, we would like to add that language into it. So clarity is vital in this particular case.
So what do you do in the case of an ADU?
If this was the ordinance?
If this was the ordinance, and it says that unimproved lot, then the additional structure would not apply. It is, it is a lot that has improvements on it.
The way it's written now doesn't say anything about a vacant piece of land. If we insert vacant piece of land in there, then people could do ADUs all over the place.
That is correct.
So I personally like it better this way.
So, for clarity, then, it is new construction of a dwelling or a building. Basically, almost exactly how it reads without any sort of stipulation as to the amount of sidewalk improvements that would be required. So they did say put a small dwelling on their property, and they owned a corner lot. They would have to then improve all of the sidewalk adjacent to the property.
Up to 25% of the cost of the construction.
Okay, you do want that in there, okay.
Okay, true. You okay? See any future problems with that?
Just give me just a second, okay?
No, that seems pretty clear, Mr. Taylor. Any thoughts on?
Any troubles with interpreting, interpreting, excuse me, interpreting the code as it reads right now?
So, for clarity, that would not include any additions, then, to your current structure? So you could, you could have an addition, you could remodel your kitchen, anything like that, that would then not require the sidewalk improvements. However, if you build a separate habitable structure, so say if you built a garage, would that count? That's separate from your house.
The way it reads now is dwelling or building.
So yes, but just for clarity, so that, so garage then would still apply to the requirement of sidewalks?
I would think that would be beneficial to the city. You could feasibly put a garage next to your house and not have a driveway. That wouldn't be beneficial to the city, I wouldn't believe. So I would be in agreement with that.
I guess, so my question then is, is if, let's use that scenario. A person wants to add a garage. If they add a garage on to their existing structure, is that the erection or construction of a dwelling or a building, as it's written here? I would say that if it was a standalone garage, like I have, that was not attached to my house, and let's say I didn't have that, and I built a garage on my property, I would say that then up to the 25% of whatever I spent to build that garage, I would be required for. If I add on a 20 by 30 piece on to my house and have room for that and call it a garage, does this require me to improve the sidewalks? That's the clarity that I'm looking for on behalf of staff, so that we don't have these things challenged by one person, and not all of us are going to be here forever, so I'd like for us to, of course, some future council will throw it all out anyway, but that's okay. I just want there to be clarity for our staff. I think that we, that's part of our responsibility and established policy, and I just, those are the questions that I keep asking.
That is a good point. And so you added language such as habitable structures, additional habitable structures, not contiguous, I guess, with the current improvements that might meet those stipulations.
Well, I'll let you guys think for a minute. What do you want to think for a minute? Let's go ahead and take some public comment, and then we can bring it back. All right, public comment. Lynn, did you have something you wanted to come and ask? Come on up here, please.
Okay, so, so would they be required to pay that 25% before they could do their building? Or, and where would the 25% go that they'd have to pay? And who would be installing the sidewalks? Who's responsibility for that? And, I don't know, kind of sounds messy. What do you think, attorney?
Thank you. 25% improvements, that's why it would be attached to the building permit? So they just wouldn't get their CVO into those improvements for, so it's up to the project proponent to have those improvements done.
And they have to be customized?
So no money is paid directly to the city, right? They have to make those improvements themselves. And once they can show that those improvements have been made, then we would sign off on their CVO, basically their occupancy permit.
And it says that in the code. Any person arranging for the erection or construction of must provide for the construction of curbs, gutters, sidewalks in accordance with city specs. So it's, it's part of the building process, is that you would construct or improve your current sidewalk situation.
Yes, they would have to be constructed within city standards. It would be constructed by a third-party contractor that specializes and can do that work within the city right away.
All right, any other public comment?
On this very issue, I'm still camp for Aipengaski. On this very issue, it brought up some serious questions in my mind. I'm a brand-new resident. I have two driveways, one on the right, one on the left, and the left hand is my porch, and the right is my carport, and with no carport on the left. So I was thinking of building, a 48-foot-long building, 10 feet wide, could my driveway be 10 feet wide and two stories high? And grow, grow shiitake, chanterels, and porcini mushrooms? And support 25, 45 restaurants with those gourmet mushrooms for the restaurants? Now, that would make me a commercial prop, commercial business. So I probably wouldn't be able to do it on a residential. And I'd have to be zoned for a commercial. But, um, uh, I also thought about just enclosing my porch and making it a rehearsal, re- recording studio, and have all the bands I've worked for come stop by on their, on their way to tour. And stop in and just be able to do whatever they want. But then I would have to be a commercial property, correct? Unless it's just a personal thing.
Well, Mr. Frey, that, those would be all questions that you'd have to, to run through the community development, uh, department here at the county.
Right.
Since it's in the county, not in the city. And, and I'm sure that they would be happy to answer some of those questions.
Okay.
For you, sir.
I can understand that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Any other public comment? Okay. Council, anything else? Staff, anything else?
So in the city manager's direction, we could strike the words "or" building. Where it says "any dwelling or building", if we just struck "or" building and kept it with dwelling.
What, what, what about the scenario that you brought up about a garage? Is a garage a dwelling? It's not, it's not habitable space.
I think the point you were making was that this would be a rental property, or somebody could live in it.
One scenario.
I agree, trying to make this.
It's clear as mud.
Easily addressable for city staff.
As you said, we do, we do some clarity here in some direction. Uh, and if the intent then is that we wanna cover any, say, additional dwelling units, like rentals, um, we can go back, you want direct staff to go back again, we can take a look at this and see how we can rework it. And it might be prudent to, to perhaps have the following discussion as well. That might add some clarity on some things.
My, my recommendation would be that, 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 that we simply continue this item. I'm not gonna be here our next meeting, so I, obviously, since I'm the one dissenter, I would like to be at the meeting, but it comes back to. That's not funny. But we can either send it back for some more, but if we, if we can continue this item, um, and then go ahead and, and have the discussion on the next item, we may be giving some direction then to staff after that. Can we do that, council? Do we have, is it, could we have consensus that we simply continue this item at this time? Or do you want to, you want to vote on it?
We've already continued this for about six months now. There's, there's two places under section A where it says "or" building. The first sentence, and the second. And we'll, we strike those four words, "or" building, in, in sentence one and two, and adopt the ordinance as that.
What would, what would, what would taking out "or" building accomplish?
It would make it easier for staff to work with the ordinance. Basically, we have an ordinance that said, "Construction of or moving of a dwelling would trigger this." And that was.
Interject real quick. Right, the only concern with that would be, don't, you know, word to commercial buildings all under as well. So if you have commercial buildings with accessory storage units, you know, in new construction.
So we need, this is not just residential. This is everything. No, no, Ms.
Is that my understanding that there's a motion on the floor? To strike "or" building in sentence one and two?
I, I did not make that motion yet. I'm trying to find the, the current.
They're still in discussion.
Municipal code, I don't think.
I'm not sure we're ever gonna come up with all the possible contingencies.
Well, I agree, I agree with that. Absolutely agree with that.
There's gonna be somebody crafty out there that's gonna come up with something that we didn't think of.
Some lawyer.
Some lawyer, right? Follman.
I'm open to bringing it back, uh, I guess in, well, four weeks. The, would that be the June 4th meeting?
First meeting in June.
Yeah, the 4th.
I, I think that because of the commercial component, I think we need to leave building in there, because this applies to commercial structure as well.
So what do we wanna do on the commercial side of things, though? I mean, is it, is in addition to a commercial building? Does, is it, so the council's directing direction to have that trigger this ordinance? Or is it, again, just additional buildings?
Are we still talking habitable?
Well, that's.
I mean, now.
So you, you definitely have the, the habitable space when it comes to the residential side. It, that's pretty clear. Commercial is, is a little different scenario. So is the intent of the council that if we increase the floor area of a commercial building, does that, does that trigger this? And if so, staff can come up with language that, that would reflect that? Or is it that you wanna see a separate building be the only trigger? Or, or obviously, new commercial building?
A new building, certainly.
What about the commercial addition?
Let businesses expand. Seriously, encourage it. That, that's the whole kinda purpose behind this discussion, is reduce the overreach that we have that is, is stymying.
I guess my, my, and I don't disagree with that, but if we expand, let's say we expand building in commercial, do we want to expand commercial properties without improvements at the street? Do we want a brand-new, uh, want, want a business owner to expand their square footage by 5,000 square feet, but not be required to, to put in sidewalks and gutters? Is that, is that, is that, is that an improvement to the aesthetic value that that new business brings? If they have a new business that's attached to their current building, and they add 5,000 square feet, but they don't have curbs and gutters?
Is there any part of our currently zoned commercial space in the city that doesn't have curbs and gutters?
Well, I can't identify all of our space, so.
I would say there's probably very little I can think of. A little bit around the S, S curve area, very little.
Okay.
I don't see it as a, as a, a huge thing. And my hope would be to encourage people to improve their properties. That's, that was what this discussion was, was for. And if city staff are gonna have a, a huge problem interpreting this code, then we need to take it back. But I don't, I don't see that they will. So I guess, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and move that, uh, we adopt ordinance 801 in order to the city councils, city Crescent City, amending subsections 12 dot 04 dot 030. Improvements required of chapter 12.04, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks of title 12, streets, sidewalks, and public places of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Can I just, a point of order, right? Because this is new verbiage here, uh, we're not actually adopting this. We're reading.
You're right, yeah.
We're, we're reading into the record by title only.
By title, and just introducing.
And introducing it for adoption at our next meeting.
I amend my motion to say we're introducing that for the 30 days.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All right, would you please pull the?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Enscore?
No. All right, that passes 3-1, and it will come back at our next meeting for, um, our consideration for adoption. Okay, we're gonna move on then to our next item on our agenda, which is, um, a related topic, and that is sidewalk repair and maintenance. Who's gonna take the first stab? Mr. Ware, Mr. Taylor?
I'll say a few words, and I'll let Mr. Taylor, uh, take it over. But this was, this is another, obviously, related component to this whole discussion. So what this item is about is in regard to sidewalks that are dilapidated or might cause a liability to the, the public, or, uh, or other matters that really, that the sidewalk needs to be repaired. And it's, and it's not in rela, it's not in relation to any sort of development or anything like that that we would be able to implement any sort of sidewalk replacement on. So the city, just from a public works standpoint, we have over 40 miles of sidewalks in our small, little city. Doesn't seem like a city of our size would have that, that many, but we do. If you look at the cost of, say, if we had to replace all of the sidewalks throughout the city, you're looking at well over $10 million to, to have to go through and do that. So we're fortunate we have this infrastructure in place. Over, a lot of it's very old. And so there's a lot of trip hazards, there's a lot of liabilities out there. Who pays for those liabilities? That's really what the discussion is for tonight. And without, I'll let Mr. Taylor talk about his research and, and what he found. Mr. Taylor?
Don't feel bad. Just about every jurisdiction's dealt with this, and struggled with this, and they continue to. Uh, there's, there is no shortage of examples out there of ongoing discussions for sidewalk repair and maintenance, uh, and sidewalk, you know, new construction as well. Um, so a lot of this currently in state highways code, section 5610, uh, it does place the responsibility for sidewalk repair on the adjoining property owner. Um, this was a 1937 amendment to the Public Improvement Act that put that in place. Uh, so if you, I believe I attached that to this staff report. So it's, it's pretty clear language. And also attached the, uh, but it's your sidewalk, uh, paper that was presented to the League California Cities. And I think that gives some really good history and examples of other cities, such as Los Angeles, who, I believe, back in the early 1970s, received some federal grant money for sidewalks, uh, repair. And they decided to pass an ordinance that placed all the responsibility on the city. Then come so many years later, they ran out of money, and the, the actual scope of the repairs that need to be made, I believe, approaching 50% of their sidewalks are in disrepair. Um, and liability as well. So not only the cost of repairing those sidewalks, but also if somebody gets hurt, they make a personal injury claim or a property damage claim, the city is solely responsible and liable for that. Uh, so it's something in tens of millions of dollars, just in claims to be paid out per year. And I think it was somewhere around a billion dollars, ridiculous amount for the repairs of the sidewalks. How's you imagine for a city of, of our size and, um, our financial means? As Mr. Ware pointed out, we have about 40, uh, linear miles of sidewalk within the city, and a lot of it's becoming aged. And a lot of this is convoluted. A lot of these laws are, as you know, are, are worked out in courts, in court cases. There's a lot of case law out there. A lot of it, um, kinda circulates around, uh, the responsibility aspect and liability too. And what the courts have found, that unless a local jurisdiction has an ordinance placing either the liability or the responsibility on a adjoining property owner, uh, that city is solely responsible. It's been handled a couple of court cases. Uh, the repair is still in the state and highway code, uh, that does require the adjoining property owners to make the actual repairs. There is a process by which the city is also required to notify them when they do need to make a repair or there's a trip hazard. Most jurisdictions have just adopted ordinances that mirror state highway code, uh, placing the responsibility and liability back on the property owners. A lot of, uh, councils and boards are not comfortable with that. So there's, there is a myriad of examples out there for shared responsibility programs, um, shared cost. For example, some jurisdictions take on the responsibility of street intersections. And as you know, the ramps and the ADA requirements can be quite costly and, uh, a little more intricate. Whereas they leave just the straight flat work up to the responsibility of the property owner. There's shared costs, where the city will chip in maybe 40 or 50%. Their property owner required to come up with 50%. So because it's, it's very in-depth, we haven't had, uh, a lot of, I'd say, legal analysis as well on, on this subject. So we would like direction, what we're asking for is direction from the council to possibly look at some examples for, uh, repair and liability ordinance. And obviously, to come back with possible, some possible examples, uh, and to look further into the actual legal aspects. Um, and a big part of this are the ADA requirements. And so there's really not even real clear, uh, law on what triggers the ADA improvements. And that, where a lot of the cost comes in, especially, you know, for the previous discussion as we have. Say we go out, and public works made determination that the sidewalks for a city block don't meet, uh, current ADA requirements. Then are they then required to go back and tear that out and completely rebuild that to, to ADA standards as well? Uh, so that's a little unclear right now in current law. Uh, there's been some case law that says yes, there's some that has said no. So we would like the opportunity to investigate that a little further as well. Again, but what we'd be looking for, uh, again, is shared liability with the property owner, and also look to place responsibility either shared with the city or the property owner, or place that on the property owner as well. And the majority of the repairs we're talking about here are probably fixing trip hazards. Um, some jurisdictions have gone as far as to really just spell out what, what makes a trip hazard. If it's a three-quarter inch separation, or, you know, spacing, or vertical, or horizontal, uh, that would meet the requirement. And a lot of this we're talking about probably going out and grinding down the sidewalk. A lot of jurisdictions will make asphalt repairs, but those aren't really long-term solutions. Again, like I said, don't feel, you know, bad, this, every jurisdiction's dealt with this. And, uh, it seems to always be an ongoing issue for, for most of them as well.
Okay, questions for Mr. Taylor?
So Mr. Taylor, if, just, um, hypothetical situation, somebody trips on a sidewalk in the city limits, and they decide to sue someone, doesn't it default through the California Streets and Highways Code to the property owner?
So on its face, it seemed, it would appear that way, but no. Case law has actually said the opposite, that unless the city has notified that property owner and has clear language in an ordinance stating that it is, they're liable, uh, it actually falls back on the city. And I would believe historically, uh, we have addressed those situations. We have not gone back and had shared liability or placed liability on property owners. So again, we are in that situation right now, where we are making the repairs and we're taking on the full liability.
So would we need to currently then notify all our property owners of that on us through the Streets and Highways Code?
Correct. But again, it's what case law, what the courts have found, is that a city would also need to adopt an ordinance with clear, clear language, basically mirroring the highways code. And like I said, a lot of jurisdictions, probably the majority of them, have done so.
And, and if we don't want to mirror, then we have to establish what our standards are. Whether that's shared responsibility.
Correct.
Whatever those percentages are, full responsibility, like Los Angeles did in the 70s. But we have to, in order to, to shield ourselves from the potential, uh, litigation liability, we need to put something into our municipal code that establishes what our policy is.
Yes, I believe the, it was clear language, basically stating the liability would be on the property owner.
I, as a property owner downtown, I'm not gonna take responsibility for the gaps in the sidewalk from the trees that you guys planted here in Crescent City 40 years ago that are cracking my foundation.
And a lot of cities have, have made that same finding. And that's, that's what we're asking for, the opportunity to go back and look at a, a lot of these other examples. And we'll present them more in-depth. If, you know, one, I guess one choice is the council say, "We don't even wanna hear this one, address it." Thanks, but no thanks. Um, or what we're asking for is a direct, uh, staff to go back and look at some of these examples and present them and see what direction we may wanna go. And a lot of jurisdictions have done that. They've taken on responsibility for city trees. Uh, they take on responsibility for subsidence. They take on responsibility for subsidence. Say the earth was improperly compacted and it sunk and the sidewalk settled. But for regular, you know, use or damage caused by the property owner, then the city would take on responsibility. So now, again, that would be your, kind of your shared responsibility program.
Sounds like you're in favor of that, of shared responsibility.
I am not, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying, well, let's go out and look and, and we can prepare some examples, and things that we think would work for the city, that we think are the most beneficial, fair to the city as well as property owners.
I mean, I'd go back to Councilwoman's kind, Council, Mayor Potem Kime's example. You know, you're not necessarily responsible for the trees being planted, but because it is your business downtown, you are responsible for that person getting their way to your business. You're responsible for the increased foot traffic along that sidewalk, just as we're responsible for installing the sidewalk at some point and maintaining the streets. There should be a shared responsibility between both entities, the private companies and public governments. And there's a shared responsibility with all of us really to take care of downtown.
I'm sorry, but those giant tree roots that are the tripping hazard and raising the sidewalk, that is not my fault.
Well, neither is an earthquake subsidence event, like, that's not anybody's fault either.
But the sit, then, then if it's gonna be shared responsibility, or it's my responsibility, I want purple sidewalks. I want purple sidewalks with triangle stamps in them.
I don't think that matches the aesthetic goals of the, of our downtown.
Because there is no plan.
Right.
She, she makes a good point.
Because there is no plan. If it's my responsibility, why can't I have what I want?
It's a shared responsibility.
Well...
Shared means both of us.
It's not, it's not a shared responsibility currently.
No, it's our responsibility, the city's responsibility currently, or according to the state, it's, yeah, yours.
Well, in the absence of us having anything in our municipal code, it is ours right now, because we don't have anything on the books. Not only the responsibility, but the liability. And while there are certainly cases to be made about just what, what, what Potem Kime is addressing, and that is things that are, that are being created by decisions that have been made in the past that we need to address, I think that we, we need to focus on the, the bigger picture of all of our sidewalks and establishing a ordinance that, that takes into consideration the big picture while identifying those, those isolated situations that need to be addressed. But we need a comprehensive, a policy that establishes what are we gonna do with the forty linear miles of sidewalks within our one-point-six square miles of the city limits? And we need to know what that is, and there's sidewalks in places other than downtown. And we, we need to establish a policy and put it on the books. And I think staff needs to look at all those things, including the things that are, that are city, city actions that have been done in the past, like trees and tree wells. And that could be other things that have created that. We, we have a city installed water lines, sewer lines, we have all kinds of things that run underneath sidewalk areas as the city has been developed and redeveloped, that all those things need to be looked at. But we still need a comprehensive strategy of what is the policy going to be that we're gonna put on the books in our municipal code. And I think that's what the staff needs to start working on so that we can, we can get something to discuss. So I think that any, any specific illustrations like, like Councilmember, all of our council members have mentioned, need to be part of the equation.
Additionally, I'd like to see as specific a definition of trip hazard as possible.
Yes. No, I, I agree. I think that a prudent ordinance would, would have something like that, like that in it. You know, what are, what are the criteria that, that we're gonna require the property owner to, to adhere to, you know, define that trip hazard? Also, staff would come back with options in regard to tree wells. And then I think the other part of this is cost share, and then are there options that the city would be willing to offer those property owners as far as financing goes? You know, this is gonna be a city requirement, is there any sort of loan-type program that, that we could assist them to, to make these type of improvements? And if that's something the council will be interested in.
It does seem incredible that the city council can go, oh, yes, Mrs. Kime, it is your responsibility. It's, it just seems incredible to me that we can take that kind of step. So I guess we have to evaluate what case law is, like Mr. Taylor said.
Well, and, and the California Streets and Highways Code, I mean, we didn't, we didn't write it.
No.
Well, apparently it doesn't mean anything, 'cause the courts ruled differently.
No, what it is, is for the city officials to enforce it, we have to create our own law, because we don't have anybody authorized to enforce that provision of the Streets and Highways Code. So it's...
That's what you, that's what you were gonna say, huh?
No, and I wanna clarify a little bit, so, Martha's correct, and with the Streets and Highway Code does currently put that responsibility on the property owner, but it does not put the liability on the property owner. So that's kind of the crux of it.
But by default, the responsibility still falls back to us because we have no means to enforce it without something on our books. So even if we were to identify based on the California Street and High, Streets and Highways Code, that this trip hazard is in fact your responsibility, let's just say we did define that, there's no way for us to enforce that, for it to be fixed currently because we have nothing on the books. So it would make sense to me that we have something on the books that, that is reasonable and acceptable, that the five of us, or at least three of us, can agree upon, to put into the books so that staff can do their job.
That's correct. That's what we're looking for, just direction to come back to the council, or there's, you know, without direction, it basically stays as is.
No, you need to bring us...
Yeah.
My feeling is you need to bring us back something for us to begin this discussion in earnest on what this new ordinance is gonna look like.
We have consensus.
You have a big task.
There's a lot of options.
You have a big task for, for city staff to, to make an ordinance that works, that people can agree with.
We only have to have three. Would you want staff to work on this?
Yeah.
If, if, if we don't have consensus that you want staff to work on it, then, then it'll just stay the way, way it is, and, but just as long as we understand that liability, ultimately, the inference is that liability will fall to us, and that we have no means to enforce current state code.
I would like staff to bring something back.
Okay.
And, and I do, I, I believe there could be an equitable shared responsibility.
All right, good.
There could be an equitable.
Well, we're gonna hold out hope then. I like it could be. So does staff feel like they have a direction from the council?
Yes, I believe we have direction, and we'll, we'll bring back, you know, all of the options that we see that, that could work in this situation, so.
Purple sidewalks?
Probably not purple sidewalks. A lot of other options.
Sure, Mr. Weir, if you have a quick comment that you'd like to make, yeah?
On the sidewalk situation with, with the businesses, coming from Berkeley for thirty-five years, the business owners own half out to the middle of the street, apparently, according to the street law, I don't know, I'm just going by hearsay. But the business owners own half the property out to the street, which makes them liable for the sidewalk. And they have to keep the repairs up so that there is no wheelchairs trying to get by and they tip over, 'cause they're not, their sidewalk's in, okay, apart. So what's happening with that is, in Berkeley, I'm just going by Berkeley, those taxpayers, business taxpayers don't feel like they need to pay their taxes because they have so many street people sitting on their sidewalks, pan-hamming and being dweebs all day long to people in public, that they're thinking about going in a business association and commemorating together and not pay their quarterly taxes to make a political point. But then when they do that, they got IRS coming down and more arding problems and more like being miserable than you'll ever imagine. So they just don't do that, and they put up with all this. Now, there's no business owner's gonna willing to go out and improve their sidewalks when they got trash sitting on it all day long, being dweebs to the public. And so, you know, when's that, you know? And then when the police don't come and deal with it, then they feel like as a business owner and it's happening in front of their business, then don't arrest me for coming out and dealing with it on my own. And then it puts those business owners in a possibility of getting arrested, 'cause they dealt with it the way they see fit, because the policeman weren't doing it. So, you know, it's one of those type of things. At the same time, I wanna bring up the situation with you, that you and your personal home may have to expand and have to put out more sidewalks. But you won't have to put out more sidewalks if you go up an extra story and have their business go up in the air. We're not living in New York and we're not living in Berkeley, they have a certain amount where the skyscrapers have to be, but, and they changed all that. So you, you make your extra bedroom, a master bedroom and a bathroom bath up on the second floor, and you don't have to expand your property to make sidewalks, and it keeps you from having to pay more taxes and paying for street sidewalks. And I think that would be the way to go on that issue. But that's your personal home, and I don't know what you want your personal home to look like, but that's just my thought.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, we are, we are moving towards the end of our regular agenda, item number sixteen, June two thousand eighteen Sister City delegation trip to Rikuzun Takata, Japan. Mr. Weir, are you gonna start this?
Thank you, Mayor. In score, members of the council. So yes, as part of our Sister City agreement, we, we did have a very successful celebration and signing of the agreement this, this past month. So I would like to thank the, the council and the community for all their efforts in, in regard to that. I think that the city as a whole, our community as a whole, really, really shined in this whole event. At the Colts Center, there was well over two hundred people that witnessed that, that signing. And so what this is, this is in regard to the, the follow-up. So they sent their delegation here, over twenty people, citizens, city council members from Rikuzun Takata, and now, now we are going to go to Rikuzun Takata, Japan to finalize the agreement. They signed it here, we're gonna sign it there. So that's really what, what the crux of this is. So that's where we're asking the, the council to authorize the mayor, as well as one other member of the council, to, to go on that trip to sign that agreement, as well as a couple of city staff, interim city manager, myself, also our finance director, Linda Lever, to, to really see and experience what that city went through. The, the similarities between our, our two cities are vast, and you can, you know, I haven't experienced it, but those that have gone say it is absolutely eerie. That delegation group that came here, I mean, that's all, you know, through the translator, they, they could talk about is just how similar our two communities actually are. And so to be able to go from just an emergency management standpoint and witness, you know, firsthand that the city, the rebuilding that they're doing, talk to the people that experienced it, I think is invaluable training for key members of the EOC like, like Linda and myself are. And so from, from that side of things, from city engineer side, from city manager side, from EOC manager side, as well as Public Works operations, the training, I think, is, it's, it's an opportunity that we as a community really shouldn't miss out on. And then obviously, the, the finalization of the signing of the Sister City agreement, that's another key component in developing this relationship. So that's, that's really what this is about. It's continuing this to try to work towards that partnership, to try to work towards building these relationships with all of the, all of the different aspects that we as a community can really benefit from. Training is estimated to cost up to three thousand, now that is a, that is a maximum amount, 'cause we don't know what airfares are, we're, we're going to do at the time of this, the writing of this staff report. We feel that this will cover all of our expenses, which is basically just travel-related. This is expenses related to just getting over there. The city of Rikuzun Takata is putting us up in accommodations, so they're paying for that, as well as all of our food when we are over there. So it's simply just the travel cost to get there and back. Mayor Inscore, you're also very familiar with this, this topic, and sure can add.
Yeah. I, I think that, that as I've presented multiple times in our community regarding this, both before the delegation came in April as well as after, there are three, three components to this that I have stressed, and I will stress them again tonight, and allow the council to weigh in. The first is obviously on disaster preparedness. There are key components that we can learn from this city who has experienced a disaster that exceeds anything that we have been through. And the learning curve obviously was exponential for them. They believe that they were completely prepared for the event that they experienced in two thousand eleven, and they discovered that they were not. And so the learning lessons that have come out of that have been huge, having met with key members of their disaster teams and what would be comparable to our emergency operation center and, and here, there's clearly significant education that we can take back from a disaster preparedness standpoint. One of the big components of that is the education component that they've used through the school system and through their children, that I think that we could model in our own community to provide education to each and every household on, on what is expected. And it dovetails very well into some of the things we've already done through the Office of Emergency Services, Prepared Delta, Nor, Everbridge, all those things. Second component is, is economic development. They have learned how to do business in a new world that has been, that has been affected by disaster. I think that there are, because of the similarities in climate, there are things that they're learning to do as they're rebuilding, that we can appropriate and find ways to do things here. As we struggle here with issues that are put upon us by regulations in the state when it comes to water quality, air quality, the fact that they have learned to, to do major agricultural and with almost no water, very limited water resources, and with almost no impact to the existing surroundings through organic farming on a massive scale, there are huge learning curve, things that we could bring in that could be applied here from an economic development standpoint. Also, the, the fishing industry and what they've done in recovery to be able to do fishing in the standpoint of development of, of both oyster farming, scallop farming, things that, that we may be able to appropriate and, and bring into our community here. And then finally, the, the cultural awareness piece that has been driven by our, our students and our young people, the, the opportunity for young people here to be connected with something outside of this community and feel like, I don't have to leave here in order to be able to be a part of something bigger than here. Right now, we lose students every year who just leave here because there's nothing here. Why not create a place where here is a place to be and have these cultural ties where we have built some interchange? And maybe this is not the end of those interchanges, maybe this is just the beginning. So those are the three things that I have touted, and I'm gonna continue to tout, that disaster preparedness, economic development, cultural awareness are all viable components of this relationship. And this is the, the final piece to formalizing that relationship, moving us forward, so.
So Mayor, might I just, one other component to this is the, is the budget side of it. So per-person cost, like I say, that's worst-case scenario is three thousand, obviously, we'll do it as logistically and as economically as we possibly can. And so upon approval, we'll be able to finalize some of those, some of those details as soon as tomorrow. Budget-wise, for, for this year, the city council has been very frugal with their travel budget. We typically budget fifteen thousand dollars for all five of the council members, that's a total of fifteen thousand, to attend yearly trainings, League of Cities. To date, the council has spent under twenty-six hundred dollars total. So there is adequate budget to send two council members, even at this worst-case scenario of three thousand dollars per person. City manager budget is also in a similar state. There's currently three thousand dollars budgeted, and, and we haven't spent any in that particular line on them. The Finance Department budget also has adequate resources for this trip. So that's where we stand from a budget standpoint.
I'll also just point out one other thing, and then I'll open it up for the council, and then we'll go to public comment, is that, that in all the, in total, the trips that have been made in preparation to get us to this point to Japan, not one penny of public funds have been spent on any of these trips. Anything that has been spent has been paid for either by the city of Rikuzun Takata or out of the pockets of the people who've gone. I've been twice, I, I, there's no secret to that. The city has not paid one penny for me to make either one of those trips. The cost involved... The costs involved in that have either come from the city of Rikuzan Takata or have come out of my pocket. And that is true for every other participant. I cannot speak towards the school district with the students coming and going because I'm not privy to that. I do know what we've done, both city and county, and those costs have not been passed on to the public at all in any of these trips so far. The city of Rikuzan Takata has paid for all of this to establish this relationship. This is the first time we're asking our community to reciprocate and say, we will spend some of our money to establish and formalize this relationship. So, okay. Anybody else have something to say and then we'll go to public comment?
I just, I firmly believe that going there, seeing it, meeting them, from Darren being a battalion chief, you also are a volunteer firefighter. Linda, you have traveled back east and attended all of the emergency training as well. I tried for a year to get my husband on board with some of the subtle things that we could do, like having rubber boots next to our bed or whatever. He was unwilling, unwilling to spend money just to have a pair of rubber boots next to the bed. The first person to have rubber boots next to the bed upon returning from Rikuzan Takata was my husband. And he was the first one to back the car into the driveway now. So seeing it firsthand, experiencing it, we have so much to learn from their community. And this exchange is vital. I believe it's vital. And if that might cost us $12,000 or less, hopefully, you guys are pretty, you tend to be pretty frugal, especially Linda. I believe it is an incredibly worthwhile venture and I give my full support to that.
Mr. Paulman?
I mean, there isn't much left to say really about this. You know, just as a lifelong resident of this community, somebody that's grown up in Crescent City and has been the bored kid here before, like, this doesn't happen. And this is just such a great opportunity for this town to really, you know, join the world in a sense. That's what I think of when I think about this. Like, this puts Crescent City on the map. This says, we're not just some podunk little town 80 miles from any mall or anything special going on. Something special is going on here. Support the endeavor.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Short, anything you want to add?
Anxious to have yet more discussions with their folks who, well, when Rikuzan Takata delegation was here last, talked to one of the committee members that were responsible to put together their roads and their evacuation plan and their color codes and their way to notify the public about how many minutes it would take for them to walk to the safe zone and where they were in, where they were in either the red zone, the yellow zone, greens. It was just fascinating what they put into that. And I hope to learn more about emergency response. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
No, just the two actions from the council on this particular item. One is to authorize the international travel for those, for two council members, two staff members, and then to appoint that council member other than the mayor to attend on this trip.
All right. Very good. We'll open up public comment then.
I've got a lot to say tonight. On this issue, I feel like you're wanting visions for this place to make a better city and bring entertainment here. You're looking probably the person that can make that happen. I'm not a booking agent, but I happen to know all these bands being 47 years as a stagehand, trash crew, stage crew, partner of security and catering. And I could probably make it happen for the fairgrounds. Because being a resident here for three years, all I've seen the fairgrounds being, is sitting empty, never being used. And the only time it does get used is for Ricky the redneck monster moron events happening. And so why not bring Night Ranger opening up for Lynyrd Skynyrd and ZZ Top? And when you bring that concert bill here, you won't have enough motels, gas stations, and restaurants, and your whole business owners here will generate more revenue than you'll ever see. You bring Dead and Company, the remaining members of the Grateful Dead for a three-day concert at the fairgrounds, you'll make more money than the whole place makes in the whole year. It happens in every town we went to. So, you know, you're complaining because the county and the city's broke? You don't want the Bay Area here because that's why we all moved up here into Del Norte County, to leave all those morons down there? Well, bring concerts here, it's going to bring the Bay Area, it's going to bring nine counties here to go to those concerts, and you won't have enough motels and places and you'll be making more money than cha-ching than you'll ever know.
Thank you. Okay.
Linda Sutter. Okay. So, for the last couple of years, you know, first off, let's talk about the ship came in a couple of years ago, a little boat. We fixed it up and got it back to it. And the Japanese feels indebted to us for doing what we did for them. Fine. And they took you folks, not once, but twice, to Japan. And two times, you've been there. You've had plenty of time to learn about what's going on, Mr. Blake, Inscore, in regards to disaster preparedness, economic development, and cultural awareness. That's fair to say, I would think. But, you know, Crescent City has a propensity of a champagne diet with a water budget. You guys don't have the money to be spending, the taxpayers' money, when our streets are in disrepair, we've got boarded up stores, and it's called economic development. And so you want to go over there. I understand the emotion that you all have and the attachment, but you've got to divide the line. You've got to say, thank you very much for this invitation, we are honored, but we can't afford it right now. You've got to have face to say that because that's the actuality. Now, if you're going to spend $12,000 to go over to Japan so you can learn the three things you've already learned, then there's something wrong that you're not learning. Okay? Secondly, I went to Greece this year. It was an eight-day trip, ten altogether with travel. I left out of Metford, Oregon because we didn't have an airport here. My total trip, including a four-star hotel, was $1,495. Now, if $3,000 a person is the best you can do, you better book it at a different time of the year, maybe January, February, where the rates are a lot less than during the summer months when everybody's traveling and the costs are more expensive. But I don't support this at all, not for $12,000 when we could be doing something here to affect our economy a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, we will get one shot at this. All right. Thank you. Tim?
Tim Donovan. I'm a county resident, but I support everything that you do here in the city. And one thing I'd like to point out, circumstances change from year to year, from point to point. And I think that they'll get some things there that they still need to teach us and we'll learn it. One of the things I would like to say, one of the reasons I stuck around was because the recycling, in my understanding, Japan is one of the best recyclers in the world. And I think when you go, maybe take some time to go check that out.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chair Howard, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be with you tonight. I was trying to determine whether or not I wanted to speak, but at this point, I do. I think Ms. Sutter brings up some good points. We all struggle economically here, both on the county and the city side. But at the same time, our partners overseas, through an extended hand, have asked us to do something reciprocal, which is to sign the Sister City agreement, which they've taken so much time and effort, not only through their youth, but also through their council to make sure happens. It's not something we could just ignore or brush aside. These relationships were established after World War II. Matter of fact, my family helped create the Sister City program after World War II, specifically to regain the bonds and the connection for people between countries that were at war. That growth, that effort grew into what we know today and allows for the relationships like we're seeing now to continue. But as you've spelled out very eloquently and the council has reflected upon here today, this is about something bigger. This is about what we could learn from a country, and more importantly, a community that was devastated. And we've done a lot to get there. But you, as elected leaders, set the course of responsibility for that learning experience and have the best to direct staff to implement those on-the-ground measures. That, again, is one of the most important things, that as you begin to share those experiences, you come back home and direct staff to respond appropriately for our community to learn from the mistakes of another community. I don't care how much it costs. I honestly don't. If we could save one life, if we could save one life from what you learn on that trip, then that $12,000 is worth it. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from the council?
I would like to respond to Ms. Sutter. I agree with you that we have traveled multiple times, but I want to remind you, there's a language barrier. And even though we have translators and we're learning, there's still a delay in getting the information. And that, the efforts that we've put forth traveling there, I mean, I've put out personal money to go. And I was happy to do so because I know the benefits of international relationships. And I know that this will benefit our community. All I can say is that if one life is saved, I agree with you, Chair Howard, it's one of those things you can't understand fully until you go. And that's why I think it is so important to have our engineer, our finance director, our fire battalion chief, they need to go. They need to see it.
Pretty much did that already.
We've done that.
All right. Well, we've had good discussion and I appreciate the input. We, the interesting thing about the whole process with working with the Japanese from a governmental standpoint is that everything has a process. And when we visited there last year, it was just an invitation to come see our community, and that's all it was. And they paid for us to come and see their community. This year, they paid for us to come over there and extend an invitation to begin the formal process. On behalf of Del Norte County and the city of Crescent City, I extended that invitation and invited them to establish this relationship. Mayor Toba, on behalf of the city council and Chairman Ito, agreed, and they scheduled their trip and came here. So in a sense, they've already paid for three trips, two of ours and one of theirs, to come here to get to this point. I agree, there's lots of needs in this community. I'm not going to argue that point. But the reality is, is we would not be spending travel budget money to address those needs. And if we had, were building a relationship with somebody in Wyoming that could help us establish some of these same things, I'm not sure we would be having these same debates. I think the international component and the aspect of this being a truly feel-good story has colored some of our perspectives to make it feel like maybe this is not a good thing. The fact of the matter is, is I have not spoke to a single person in this community who engaged with anyone from that delegation who does not believe wholeheartedly that this is a good thing. I didn't have anybody walk out of the cultural center in April and say, blah, this was a waste of time. Now, maybe there were those who felt that way, but it's not what I heard from our public. I guess this is one of those things that if we make this decision, and I encourage this to do so, that if 10 years from now, nothing has developed out of this other than it has provided an opportunity for students in our community to engage and continue to engage with students in their community, and that's the only thing we have to show for it, then I'm going to say, good job Crescent City and Del Norte County. And if people want to naysay on that, then I suppose that's their right. So, with that said, we do have two actions to address, the first being the authorization of the travel, up to $3,000 per person for the mayor, one other member from the council, the interim city manager, and the finance director. And the second item being to appoint one of our members to represent the city alongside the mayor and staff, provided that the first is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize up to $3,000 per person for the mayor and appointed council member, interim city manager and city finance director to travel to Rikuzan Takata, Japan on June 16th through June 23rd to represent the city in signing our Sister City agreement.
All right. I have a motion.
I will second that.
I have a second. All right. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore?
Yes. Very good. We have a second item. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Darren Short to accompany the mayor on this trip.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes, I thank you.
Councilmember Paulman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, everyone, for your input on that. Chair Howard, thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate that and your busy schedule. Okay, we have come to the end of our regular agenda. We do have some legislative issues that are in front of us, though the one that is mentioned in print is Assembly Bill 1912 by Rodriguez, Assemblyman Rodriguez, public employees retirement JPA liability. And so, I don't know, council, are you going to take first stab at addressing this for us? We have a sample letter that you had sent to us. We also had some, I shared some information regarding Calpers' input or hopefully lack of input on this item. So, you want to start us off?
Sure. So I'll just give a brief summary of what this proposed legislation does. AB 1912 would apply retroactive as well as prospective, joint and several liability for all retirement-related obligations to any current or former members of joint powers authorities throughout their existence. So retirement-related obligations include active employee normal pension costs, retiree unfunded accrued liabilities, as well as both active and retiree healthcare and other OPEB benefits. The law would also require that the public retirement agency file suit against all agencies that have ever been a member of a terminated JPA for all retirement-related obligations and prohibits any retirement system from approving a new JPA without the express joint and several liability provisions. This is a significant departure from the current state of the law. And it really places member agencies, since this would be retroactive and not just prospective, in a pretty tough... this would be retroactive and not just prospective, in a pretty tough position for having signed up, apparently signed up for something they had no idea they were signing up for. So there's many problematic aspects to this, especially, you know, as far as how our member agency is going to plan for this in a fiscal sense. You know, to manage to put this liability on your books in the event that an authority, you know, goes under, there's discussion in this letter about how that could potentially violate the California Constitution because of the huge balloon in your obligations for that year. So there's a lot of issues with this. And we did provide the draft letter that the California League of Cities drafted in opposition. And there's also a request for comment to CalPERS urging them to take no position, that is not a support or an opposition to the legislation, which is probably the best outcome you could hope for from CalPERS on the issue.
Okay. Thank you. We have questions from Council.
What is, what's this law supposed to do? I mean, what is the benefit of them creating
I guess it's an extra safety net, or, you know, proposed sort of safety net in the event that these, a joint powers authority agency, sort of, you know, goes under or terminates its existence, because it's not financially making it anymore. You know, where do those obligations go?
So, and the two most obvious illustrations in our community is the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority and the Solid Waste Management Authority. In that scenario, if AB-1912 was enacted, as I understand it, if one of those JPAs was to dissolve, those employees, the responsibility for the funding of their retirement would fall to the member agencies. Currently, that would not necessarily have to be the case, that if they, if those, if that entity folded, that the liability is dropped back onto the former member agencies. The whole point of establishing JPAs is to shield the member agencies from long-term liabilities. If you remove the ability to shield the member agencies from long-term liabilities, if that was to dissolve, then what it's going to do is cause people to wonder, why do we bother establishing these JPAs if we're no longer shielded? And then the CalPERS thing, from my standpoint, to me, the person who's getting the money probably ought not be weighing in on who should be paying it. Maybe that's too simplistic, but since they're the one that will be receiving this funding, I think that that's part of the rationale, they shouldn't be weighing in one way or the other. They should simply receive whatever they receive from whatever member entities that are contributing. They shouldn't be trying to legislate with their influence. And CalPERS has huge influence in the state over which way that this should go. The influence ought to be coming from municipalities such as ours, who have JPAs that they're participating in, that don't want this protection to be removed from us. So, it's a pretty convoluted situation, but it just concerns me that we may incur other long-term liability down the road, if either one of those pretty significant JPAs were to dissolve.
And I think one of the practical realities is that you will see that JPAs will not be formed anymore, and most of them will probably go away, which is unfortunate, because not only are they used for, you know, they do shield the member entities, but they are pooling of resources and, you know, community relationships. And if you look at the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, how many local jurisdictions you have working on issues together. So, it would really be a shame to see all those fall apart.
Okay. All right. Anything, Mr. Weir?
So should we be sending two letters? One asking CalPERS Board?
Stay out of it. Sorry.
To adopt a no position?
Yeah.
And this letter also?
Going to two different places.
Yes.
So the CalPERS letter is timely, because it needs to go tomorrow. Their meeting is scheduled for the 15th, and so it needs to go tomorrow to be assured that it will be read into their record. The League of Cities is coordinating efforts for cities to go to the CalPERS meeting on May 15th to speak in public comment against them taking a position, either for or against. And certainly, if we have city or county staff who happen to be in Sacramento on May 15th, it would be, that would maybe be something that, Mr. Weir, you'd like to reach out to, Mr. Serena, and just, I don't know if this is on their agenda tomorrow, I haven't looked, but if we have any city or county staff who happen to be in Sacramento on May 15th, and could attend the CalPERS meeting and speak to this, I think that that would be, that would be great. All right. Yes, we'll take one public comment. Yes, Mr. Hart? Nothing? Very good. All right. Thank you. All right. Okay. So then I'm looking for consensus on both of these letters, or we can treat them separately if you so desire.
You got consensus from me for both letters?
They say the same thing, so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So staff or will have to, we do not have a template for the CalPERS letter, but there are some bullet points in the League's information that I think will enable that letter to be crafted. I guess my question is, is do staff feel confident that we can get that done tomorrow and get it sent off?
We're at our interim city clerk, Robin Patch, and she says most definitely.
We'll get that done, and I will affix my signature to it, and we'll get it sent tomorrow then. I think we have consensus. Any other legislative items that we need to look at tonight? We got it. Thank you, though. All right. It's good to be looked after. All right. Anybody have anything? Okay. Anything that, for the good of the order tonight, anybody have anything they want to report out over the last couple of weeks?
On April 20...
Go ahead.
Okay. On April 25th, I was in attendance at the Senior Center Board of Directors Annual Meeting. We seat new members and vote on bylaw amendments. And then on May 1st, I was at the Delano Local Transportation Commission Meeting. The DN LTC is looking for a person or company who can provide maintenance on emergency call boxes that are maintained up and down Highway 199. So call Tamara Layton, or go to the website, the Delano Transportation website, if you can do that, or know somebody that can do that. And that's it.
Okay. Sure.
I was also at the Transportation Commission Meeting, and just wanted to mention that the Craig's Creek Trail is, we approved the inclusion of that trail in the active transportation plan. So we should see some improvements to that trail coming up, too. So, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, one of you mentioned it.
I had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. I also attended the transportation meeting. Good things are happening. Live from downtown was hugely successful. The library was amazing, and our partnership with them and the Child Care Council is fantastic. And it was a sort of Star Wars-themed event, "May the Fourth be with you." And it was really fun to see families and strollers and dogs on leashes, and everyone listening to live music, and enjoying themselves in the beautiful weather, and having, you know, food made right there on the street. The chief was there, thank you, walking up and down, making sure everyone was behaving themselves. And it was, it was great. So I really appreciate working with some great women to make that happen.
All right. Thank you. Well, we, I guess since we've met again, we've had, we did have the Japanese delegation. I certainly appreciate the council members who participated in the things that we did, and the community especially. It was a fantastic event. We did have another visitor bureau meeting. We got our first look at some of the branding and strategies that the new marketing company is presenting us to, and we'll be having a meeting next week to revise some of the input that we put back to that, and look forward to being able to start doing some community outreach on some new branding and strategies for increasing tourism here in our community. At a LAFCO meeting, did a presentation to the Board of Realtors. Healthcare District Two by Two, as we continue to talk about issues affecting our community and affordable, quality healthcare. Trade Agency Meeting had scheduled to be down at Redwood Rising Launch with the National State Parks down at Prairie Creek. Unfortunately, Chair Howard and I were two cars behind the major collision that took place on the Klamath Bridge, and we are, certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of the driver who lost their life in that accident, and we're very sorry for that. So we were not able to attend that, but I understand that it was a great event. I, and continued to meet with Solid Waste Management Authority, trying to work towards some of our long-term solutions for recycling, and we talked a little bit about that tonight. Okay. That's it. I will...
Mayor Inscore, before you adjourn...
I forgot. I didn't let you do your report.
No, no, it's all right.
My apologies.
No, just a couple of things I definitely wanted to get out there. One, I wanted to thank the Delano Local Transportation Commission. They authorized the city $10,000 for ATP grant assistance for Pebble Beach, so that project will be kicking off. Also wanted to inform the council and the public, a film crew from PBS was in town last week, and so they're doing a segment on the coastal trail throughout our community in Crescent City. So Charlie Helms with the Harbor District, myself, and Sarah Crohn were interviewed, and got to explain a little bit about the benefits of the California Coastal Trail in our community. And so, I'll keep the council updated once we know more about the area of that particular segment. And then also, city staff has been working with multiple departments within the county, the Community Development Department, the Public Health. I've been working with Fish and Game, the CHP, as well as other members of the community in regard to the cleanup behind Safeway. So we're posting notices right now, and we're going to be working with all those agencies to do an extended cleanup effort. That should commence May 21st. So I wanted to get that out there. Then also, just a informational that there's going to be a downtown cleanup this Saturday. That's going to be in and around the library parking lot, to kind of spruce that up as we get ready for the summer season and the farmer's market and all those things.
Great. All right. The other thing I mentioned, I forgot to mention, is the lead-in awards were last week, and it was a great honor. Chief Menzel presented three very well-deserving awards to part of our force, and we had lots of other people recognized, not only people in law enforcement, but also community members. I think it was, it was very appropriate, Chief, and I thank you for recognizing those who help provide services for our canine officers. I think that was a very good idea, and, sir, I appreciate you doing that, because that's something that I don't think that most of us even think about, the fact that those, in the same way that medical professionals and take care of us, we need good professionals to take care of our canines. So, thank you, Chief, for recognizing our community partners in that. We will be adjourning from here. And to our next time that we will meet will be our Budget Workshop. It will be on Thursday, May 10th, at the wastewater treatment plant conference room. I will also announce to the public that the following day, we are going to be doing interviews for our city manager. I know people have asked where we are in that process, and so we will be interviewing four candidates on Friday, May 11th. And we will also have a citizens panel that will be interviewing them as well, and we look forward to updating you on that as we move forward. I will let the public know that Protem Kime will be running our next city council meeting on May 20th. I will be on vacation, and so I trust that you guys will all be in great hands, and you'll do everything that you guys always do, whatever that means.
She's going to beat your record.
She's going to beat my record? Well, I bet you get out of here before 8:45.
I believe we have closed session to continue.
And we are going to adjourn from our open session, but we do need to return to closed session for a few minutes. We do not anticipate to report anything out, so we will adjourn this meeting.